All right, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to welcome everyone to your Village Board meeting of October 13th. As you know, October is breast cancer where this month. With that in mind, I ask everyone to rise for the pledge of allegiance. And then open the silence to honor all those who have lost the celebrations in these terms and celebrate courageous survivors and having inspired me about. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we're going to have some more chairs. Okay, ladies and gentlemen. We got a couple of seats up front if anybody wants to.
Anything else now?
When I marry, he's got one up here. So before, before we move on to board business, I have a vital presentation to make. A very special one. So Pam Gembudi, if you can come to the front, stand at the podium. I know this is just such a pleasurable moment for you. So anybody who knows Pam knows that she is not closely at the back or the page or anything else. In fact, to get her here tonight, I had a dead bar on the street and promised her power of donuts to back her. Um, as a mayor, one of the honors I have in this thankless job is to thank people who have done so much for our community. And it gives me great pleasure to actually present my first key to the village to Pam Gembudi. So anybody who knows Pam knows how private person she is. She has never done all she's done for anything we just talked about. She always has done it for the animals. That is always what she's first and foremost, to the point where she'll tell somebody to drop dead.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and she asks.
You go, Pam, see them.
Anybody who knows Pam knows she's probably told more people no to an animal adoption than she's actually told yes to. And that's exactly the type of person you need when you're adopting out these pets who need a forever home to complete strangers. So with that in mind, I will read my little statement. So as someone who shares Pam's passion for our furry animals with my three dogs and four cats, three of which I adopted from Pam, I have the utmost respect for the work she has done. Under her leadership at the shelter, dogs who were tossed out of moving vehicles, tied to poles, left outside for hours on end by irresponsible owners, found the voice in Pam Gembudi. She was able to successfully find forever homes for dozens upon dozens of dogs. And for our feline friend, she has greatly reduced the life of cat colonies, a program that she started here in Woodbury, trapping, altering, and releasing the parents and adopting out hundreds of kittens for families of Woodbury to love forever. They say when you adopt a pet, you are not only saving the lives of this animal, but also your own. And I truly believe that. Dogs and cats bring so much joy, and I feel a complete family. It is a marvelous thing to do with a job, make such a lasting impression, and create a legacy for others to look upon and say, Pam did that. How many people can really say that about a job that you take on? Whether, you know, it's a corporate job or whatnot, that you have created something maybe bigger than yourself. Now, it may sound like I'm writing Pam's obituary, but I'm not. Uh, but on November 5th, she will no longer be employed in the Animal Control Office, be the Animal Control Office. The end of her era here in Woodbury. As Pam rides off into sunset, enjoying her grandbabies and more time with her husband, God help him, I would like to present to her a key to the village. So wherever she goes, she'll always have the key to our hearts and the hundreds of Woodbury residents for all she has done. Um, it says, "To the woman who couldn't change the past of thousands of animals in me, but has certainly managed to change their future. Our community owes you a debt of gratitude for your compassion, love, and dedication towards our furry residents. We are forever grateful for you, and we will miss you terribly." And that's my thought. By the way, I literally had to tell her that this was not happening. She wasn't going to come, but she just was not having water for anything like this. So anyway, Pam's speech.
Oh, I just want to say thank you. I very much appreciate, um, the appreciation that I'm receiving. I can't even talk. I put 100% of myself into this job. I just pray that the shelter continues as it's been run for the last 10 years that I've been there. Thank you.
All right, before I move on.
Thanks, Mr. Trump.
I.
No.
Really, Pam? Pam, you got us all tied. Uh, Pam, she's just got to leave on a note like that or the room is just now in tears. Uh, before I move on, I have a candidate here for the assembly who wishes to speak. He's got a couple of stops to make or another stop to make. So I said, I'll put you first or after this. So Chris Ikis, if I had heads in the podium.
Well, um, being a candidate was not the important reason I was here. Uh, just like many of you, Pam is the reason I'm here. And if you'd come back up. I want to thank the board for allowing me to come and make this presentation. Somehow they found out that I am a real animal activist myself. And so what I'd like to do is I'd like to present you with this certificate. It is a certificate of recognition awarded to Pam Gembudi for her many years of service to all the animals she has rescued. And it's signed by all the animals. Now, a lot of these little animals that she has rescued over the years, they don't have pockets. So they have trouble carrying money around. But we were able to squeeze all of them for $100, which we then took and in your name contributed to the ASPCA. Next year, with many more of these ceremonies, and I could do it in much more official, uh, position and capacity. So, but thank you again. This village board has got to be commended. You're, you're holding a meeting at 7:30, which means the commuters can make it. You're, you're, you have it on video. That is absolutely amazing. You, you, you folks really are. And I wish every board I went to was exactly the same way. So thank you very much for that, Pam.
Moving along to village business. Public hearing, our introductory law eight, building construction. Pam Ray Kelly, once again, stayed up long hours coming up with a name for that. So a public hearing is being held, making public comments on introductory local law eight of 2022 entitled Building Construction. To provide for the administration and enforcement of the 2022 amendments, New York State Uniform Fire and Building Code. The public notice was printed in the Times our record on October 4th. And I don't think we received any comments. The code poppin'.
No, no written comments.
Okay. Turning on, could you just give us a, a quick or a brief synopsis of this 34-page local law?
Sure. The state adopted a new uniform building code, and it's requiring many counties to adopt another local law saying that you adopt the state building code will be following it. And that's required to happen by December of this year. So if you can state the model law and there is following their term.
Okay. So at this time, I would ask anyone in the public if they wish to speak on local law eight of 2022. All right, I'm all rushed to the podium. During what 34-page legislation, going once, going twice. Okay, anyone virtually wishing to speak on this?
Just raise your hand.
You got a hand?
Do I unmute them all, or do you want them to raise their hand?
Raise your hand, please.
So just raise your hand if you want to talk, do that, I believe, by reaction.
Nothing?
No one raising their hand.
Okay. Okay, no further comments, with no comments, I should say, coming public. Can I please have a motion in a second to close the public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Tara, seconded by Judge Pirelli. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And an hour motion in second to adopt local law nine of 2022 entitled Building Construction, as printed at the ankle. Uh, motion, I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Suriello. Uh, roll call.
Mayor Jacob Marburg.
Aye.
Trustee Burr.
Aye.
Trustee Suriello.
Aye.
Trustee Pirelli.
Aye.
You're sitting in front of a pool.
Moving along, public comments on items that are on the agenda. So, uh, on the table there, which I don't know if there's any left. There is agendas for this evening. Does anyone wish to speak on anything tonight's, this evening's agenda? Right, going once, going twice. So, I don't think there's anybody. Uh, virtually? Anyone virtually wishing to speak, please just raise your hand and while unmuted. Moving along to administrative business. Can I please have a motion in a second to accept the seat of the minutes? The meeting held on September 22nd, 2022.
All right.
Second.
Seconded by, motion by Trustee Suriello, seconded by Trustee Burr. All in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? Okay. Uh, Debbie Porter, come on. Thank you. Will you please read abstract eight?
Yeah. Uh, abstract eight contains matters 22 year, six seven eight, two two year, eight year zero, and on 217,364 dollars and 22 seconds.
All right. Can I please have a motion in second to approve abstract eight as read?
I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving right along, fire department equipment request. So can I please have a motion in second to approve the fire department equipment request? Uh, 28th of 2022, total area property, one thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars for the purchase of carbon monoxide meters, officer tools, and turnips. And 20, uh, 29th of 2022, total amount of fire, only $500 for repair of tools and CPR treatment.
Motion.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fire department membership applications. So we have two this evening. So I apologize if I pronounce anyone's name incorrectly. So can I please have a motion in second to accept the applications for memberships to fire department? Jessica, Linda Latsky, and Trevor Van Der Helle, Jr., senior, you couldn't afford senior?
He's a junior member.
Oh, a junior member. All right. Second. Second, by Trustee Pirelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard. All right, appointment of a full-time motor equipment operator, or shortened to EMO. Can I please have motion in second?
ME and ER.
And, uh, what did I say?
EMO.
EMO. Okay. Motion in second to appoint Jason, Jason Mathis to the position of motor equipment operator at the hourly rate of $29, $29.12, for starting date of October 24th, 2022.
Motion.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Appointment of a minority business officer. Can I please have a motion in second to designate me, the mayor, as the minority business owner compliance officer of the village as it relates to grant applications?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ah, okay, that's, oh, there's a business. Okay. Can I please have motion in second to increase the salary of Michael Pennella, building inspector, to an additional $20,000 a year effective key year?
Motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closing our S for, overfill request. Can I please have a motion in second to approve the closing of the S for posted by Seth Over for a fill permanent application authorized the village clerk to try?
I'll make that motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it's old business, new business, a discussion and decision on the wireless consultant. So Michael Musso of HCR has notified the village that, um, that his firm is for fees and out of work in Minnesota wireless space. Therefore, the board needs to appoint a new wireless consultant. So Mr. Musso has been kind enough to recommend several firms, some individuals, and the board should have approved this or reviewed it by now. So just opening up a discussion, if any board members have anything they wish to speak on this before moving along to approve it. And after we're done, can I please have motion in second to appoint cityscape consultants as the wireless consultant to the village?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, we would be scheduled a public hearing or a joint legal request for the hammer comments. So this item is being cabled because we still did not receive the required S for this application. So I'm assuming it may be that on the next meeting. So we levy a previously exempt progress. So can I please have a motion in second to adopt the resolution as presented to levy appropriate tax amount due on properties located in various locations that were previously eligible for recent actions?
Make motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, property maintenance violations. So last year, the village of Woodbury adopted a property maintenance law to kind of, um, deal with zombie properties in the village. We have been blessed to have the town of Woodbury actually used the property maintenance for us. So they send, uh, building groundspeople to the various houses to cut lawns and whatnot. Uh, so can I please have a motion in second to adopt the following resolution as presented, which will levy a amount incurred at various locations for violations issued pursuant to chapter 2240 of the property maintenance law?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, resolution requesting veto of state legislation. So the village received cop correspondence on workers' cop carry permit, requesting that we send a letter urging the governor to veto, God bless you, to veto Senate Bill S 768 and Assembly Bill 8A1118. This bill establishes a definition for temporary total disability. And if adopted, would negatively impact the budget, conflict with collective bargaining agreements, and create obstacles and disincentives for injured workers to return work. The new provision would convert most temporary cost of disability benefits to temporary total disability, raising the benefit level for every injured worker to two-thirds of the average weekly rate, which, as you know, is statute. This bill of some kind will likely result in the village incurring a significant increase in benefit costs. So at this time, I please have motion in second to adopt the resolution as presented and send a letter of support to veto Senate Bill S 768 and Assembly Bill 81118. And for tuning ones.
Motion.
Motion. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along, supporting of legislation, Senate Bill S 1130, A in the Assembly, A 4283. It's the puppy bill law. So can I please have motion in second to adopt the following resolution as read for Senate Bill S 1130 and Assembly Bill A 4283? And I'll read the resolution, where it's Senate Bill just mentioned entitled an act to amend the agriculture and market laws to a general business law in relation to the sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits. And whereas this resolution, this legislation would prohibit the sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits by retail pet shops and authorize collaboration with entities to provide space to showcase cats and dogs owned by certain entities for the purpose of adoption. Now therefore, be it here by the resolve that the village board of the village of Woodbury thanks to all states, Senator James Scubis, and Assemblyman, Assemblyman Collins Schmidt for their support of this important legislation. And be it further resolved that the village board authorizes the village clerk to transmit this resolution, together with any other necessary documentation, to both representatives and to Governor Kathy Hochul. Where this bill, this puppy bill bill, basically sits on the governor's desk with warm percentage. So can I please have motion accept, a second, keep accepted as.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Going close. Okay, that ends regular business. Record time. Okay, moving on to public comments. So, um, at this time, we'll open up the floor to anyone in the public wishing to speak. And I will start with the first row. Okay. Introduce yourself.
I'm Samantha Armstrong, resident of Brigadoon. Just wanted to give some facts and feelings about a neighbor. Good character builds trust, strong character yields success. Good character employers empathy, and most people with strong character make excellent leaders, creating positive in what most of what they do. In my 20 years as a resident of Woodbury, I've met many amazing and kind people in my journey here. I have found a community that comes together to help each other in times of loss, tragedy, and hardships. During the pandemic, we rallied around a beloved business owner who has been a staple in our community way, way before I was here because she had to close her doors. But we all did what we had to do to help her. She, millions of times, has helped us. The many strong citizens rallied together to create positive change. I remember when my husband and I moved here, we were walking through the development, we walk home in Brigadoon. We were walking along the road where there was a very big house and property, one I knew nothing about. But he made a comment as we walked along the outside perimeter of that property on Brigadoon Boulevard. He said, um, passersby, he said he went to school with this guy, who's a dentist or something. I thought, wow, how lucky to have such a beautiful home, and not just that. It wasn't until a few years later, as I got more involved in the community, had a kid, did some fundraising, as you all know I do, fundraising for the travel softball team. Seth Holger was the first to buy a ton of points at his mom's, or anything else I was doing to support the kids. Running the senior class party, no problem. He just donated a night at the Rushmore for us to raffle off. Most importantly, this cop was his kindness in giving me the use of his ballroom to run a fundraiser event to support my dear friend, India Belker, for her family in her honor after her swift loss of life fighting breast cancer. Literally heartbroken, Seth texted me right away, offering his condolences and for me to do a fundraiser for her family there at Rushmore. And that I did, raising thousands, thousands for her kids. I couldn't have done that for them, for her, without Seth and his generosity and kindness. Then it was the house fires on Shuwick this year. I texted Seth to let him know it was, it was literally behind the practice that he has on the street, not caring about anything else. He replied to me, please let the families know I have a place to stay here at the main house. That Seth always has to offer whatever he can to help others. That's a good human. It's our time, it's time that our village board and this community step up to help this man, whether it's directing him in the right ways, whatever it may be. This business owner, this gracious property owner, fulfilled the dreams and the means to living as he has secretly and has for a time now. The longer this situation is drawn out, the more strain is put on an individual who continually gives of himself to help others genuinely. Our community is changing, and we must try and preserve what amazing beauty we have here for as long as we can, as long as all of us are living here for the long haul, we go nowhere. I love Woodbury and everything about it. I love the people, I love the passion and the pursuit of kindness that we find around us every day. Let's start doing what's right for those who want to do good for the duration. My ask is that you work on next steps to update probably, probably antiquated legislation. Let's review it and make sense of what's needed together. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Anyone else in pressure? And introduce yourself.
Rob Lepin, resident, owner, operator of Rob's Kitchen Car, then off from his catering. Um, you know, what Sam was speaking about, I saw a post from somebody that they reached out to Rushmore to, looking back, were told that they couldn't book anymore. For me, it was a shock to the system, and I have a longstanding relationship with Seth, being one of, for caterers at his establishment. Uh, what's this going to do for me and all the other businesses? Because, and I'm not going to say I'm an expert on zoning or politics of the laws and, yeah, if I was, I'd rush for a position. But I'm a foodie, but I'm also involved in this community, acting in the community. And I'm concerned about the lack of, I don't want to say short-sightedness of what the effect, anyone who opens a business, we all want them to do well. Certain businesses have a bigger effect because of how they can help other businesses in the area. Besides Seth and, you know, needing property and needing the revenue from catering to keep the property, there's a trickle-down effect for businesses in the community. Seth gets a party, I get booked for the caterer, now I'm making money. I hire my staff, which are all local Monroe, Woodbury people, they're making money. Every event I've done at Seth's property, people come up and they go, we want to do rehearsal dinner, can you do that? I said, you know, I'd rather work on your wedding or your event, but, well, I remember, go to Brothers Barbecue. They wanted to have a barbecue, so I recommended Brothers Barbecue. Another party I had them go down to and, uh, uh, sorry, a better place for that. You know, people wanted to have a luncheon that day, we heard. Again, I couldn't do it as I prepared for the wedding. I sent them down to Jay's Deli, they got a couple six with heroes. You know, they needed, before Seth had his liquor permit, they needed purchased wine and beer. I said, it's not Woodbury, I sent them Star Wine and Liquor, it's right over in Monroe. Flowers by David Anthony, Hudson Valley Party Rendles, L.B. Entertainment. These are all businesses that are benefiting by him having one event at his place. Everyone else is benefiting for it, and that's what we need in this community. Support for businesses that are helping other businesses. You know, as I said, I'm going to offer him his catering. I get reached out by other municipalities saying, hey, are you looking for a space for your catering, for a commercial kitchen? I, obviously, I've never gotten anybody in Woodbury reaching out to me saying, what do you need for your business? Are you looking to open up? I get calls from other towns constantly saying, we have space if you're interested. And that's where it helps this business, you know, besides all the other vendors I just mentioned. People come up, they're going to go shopping, they're going to buy gas at the gas station, they're going to get everything. This is what we need in the community. We need businesses that are going to help other businesses and the community thrive. And I just hope that the board can look at it and put Seth in the right direction and work with someone who wants to stay in this community, better himself and better the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Anyone else in row two? Moving on to second row. Introduce yourself. Speaker one.
Thank you. My name is Lynn Seer. I have been a Woodbury resident for the last 20 years. So thank you for letting me speak this evening. I spend a good amount of time volunteering for village and town events, and I participate in a number of court reports. So tonight, I listened to Samantha from a character perspective and thank Mr. Lippin. I listened to Mr. Lippin give somewhat of a business perspective on a particular issue at hand. So tonight I come with gentle concerns. I have specific questions that I do need answered, or we could potentially get answered at some point. And I have a reasonable ask. We are trying to address economic development in the village of Woodbury as a policy aiming to improve the well-being of our people. I think that you would all agree that that is something the village of Woodbury as a government would want to undertake that action to meet those broad economic objectives and have sustainable growth here in town, in the village. Job creation, we talked about, and retention. Through specific efforts in neighborhood development, workforce development, small business development, business retention and expansion, and real estate development is all part of economic growth for the citizens of Woodbury are requesting. So with that said, I just want to quickly run through a timeline of events that Mr. Seth Polver has, as the owner of Rushmore State, has gone through since 2013 to adequately apply for various changes to zoning legislation or permits or whatever we want to call them, I'm not getting specific in wordsmith in here. But he was originally zoned as a single-family home. I don't know if I'm allowed to ask for acknowledgement. If not, I'll just continue. He transitioned to bed and breakfast and received a proper approval back in 2013. He's applied for these variances as advised by former, and I will stress former, village personnel. And he expanded his business in 2014. Later the following year, he had, the board had advised him to reduce variances and use variances that he was working through, so he did it. Permitted use variances were specifically reviewed with Mr. Polver by Gary Thomasberger. And they came to a decision that farm and winery may be the best route, best course of action. Mr. Polver presented those items with special comments to the zoning board. He encountered obstacles relating to the roads connecting to 32. He bought equipment. He solicited advertising campaigns. He solicited personalities contracted, so he had expense. He's received a violation with no site inspection on the day of the violation. And after requesting evidence to get some color and context around the violation, hasn't really been able to move that forward. Attorneys have filed appeals on behalf of Mr. Polver. Attorneys have pulled the appeals from Mr. Polver, I mean, from the board. April 22, April 17, 2022, there was a meeting here, and the town, the village board was gracious enough to approve a set of events happening throughout calendar year 2022. But we have no path forward for 2023 and on. And so given the amount of time, given the amount of effort, and the resources that Mr. Polver has exhausted, it is our citizens of Woodbury, and we have a number of them here that we can continue to public comment if the time permits, we have a specific request of the village board as your duty as elected officials and representatives of us as taxpayers to guide Mr. Polver in the proper path to obtain a catering license. I am not proposing to be an attorney of real property tax. I can certainly, I'm a, so I am a tax accountant and a partner at Deloitte too. She would happy to help on a volunteer program basis to look into what changes need to be made. But if I understand it, those zoning rules have probably been in place for quite a long time. I have worked with other municipalities within the Orange County community to change antiquated rules. It is a process, it is a cost, it is time, and I understand and I appreciate that. But I think from an economic development perspective, it helps all of us for this gentleman to be able to do what he would like to do from a catering perspective. And my question to the board from a true economic development perspective is, has any one of you spoken to Falco to find out, should they close? What does that do to revenue to the community for catering? Has anyone discussed with Valley Rock, the owner, and I could get in touch with them, what he went through to do four Airbnbs, a full-fledged restaurant, and he's fully booked in 2024 for catering? He improved Sloughsburg's economic landscape. Why can't we do that here? Now, I will understand that Hudson Valley is beautiful, we have so much to offer. So to me, it doesn't make sense as a taxpayer, but again, we're not in your shoes, so I'm trying to be sensitive to that. I would like to specifically understand what is the concern and why we are not able to move the zoning discussions forward, to move you personal, whatever you want to call it, user agreements. You know, I don't know what the right terminology is, but I need to understand, I'm a pretty intelligent person. What is the issue? Because there's no obstacle that I would think any one of us could not work through if it's for the better good. We can make ourselves readily available to talk. I'm open to any questions right now in terms of what I'm trying to articulate if it's not clear enough. I would thank you, of course, for your consideration in the specific ask of let's get this gentleman in business. And last but not least, I did omit one thing I had asked if you had spoken to Falco. I had asked if you had spoken to anyone from Sloughsburg. And I'd like to understand if anyone on the board has done any homework or research on what level and has done negotiating. It is my understanding that it is clearly positive impact, so that's sort of where I stand. I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in row two?
My name is Amy. My name is Mike Portnoy, and I've been a resident of Woodbury, New York for 22 years, 17 of those living in Brigadoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'd like to cover the historical preservation of the village of Woodbury as a conversation about our past and our future. What is important, excuse me, in our history and what parts we can preserve for the future that will provide context, the story of Rushmore is as follows. Financier and attorney Charles Z. Rushmore commissioned a 25-room four-bedroom estate in 1908. This spectacular Spanish colonial-style mansion served as a place for Rushmore's ill-life to net to rest. The pristine grounds and privacy provided a perfect resting from the hustle and rush in New York City. Charles Rushmore was born in New York City in 1856 and remained president of New York his entire life. He founded his own offer, Rushmore Brisbee and Stern, and had the largest New York banks as his clients. Around 1900, because of Miss Rushmore's ill help, the family decided that the good country air would provide her better condition. They settled in Holland Mills for their new home and first lived in a house on Quaker Road. Soon Rushmore began acquiring property in Woodbury area, eventually owning 1,500 acres of Southern Mount Park. In 1908, they built the mansion, a Spanish colonial design, which they named Carmore. The car for carpenter, Miss Rushmore's maiden name, and more for Rushmore. It still stands today known as Rushmore State with much of the original land, now part of the Brigadoon housing community off of 32. The village of Woodbury's government should be taking action to preserve our deep history and the beauty of our town. Aside from pure education value, historic preservation is a proven vehicle for creating jobs, advancing sustainable growth, and enhancing the quality of life in towns and cities throughout Hudson Valley. With that said, the citizens of Woodbury are requesting zoning changes to allow for Rushmore State to be a premier wedding and court destination. I thank you for the consideration and look forward to an action step to start the process.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else in row two?
It's been so long, I'll second that. Six months later, here we are again discussing Rushmore State. Time and money have been wasted, especially on Seth Polver's end. It is time for a final decision to be made on this matter, and the reasons for or against it to be made by each board member. Full transparency is warranted, especially during election season this year and next year. There's many seats up for reelection. As elected officials, I would think that a role is to help constituents in a timely fashion and not let pumps go by. As a resident, Seth needs a means of survival. If you can't use Rushmore as an event venue, you ultimately, he ultimately has no choice but to sell. And who will buy a 50-plus acre property? If Brigadoon residents are happy with their quiet vote now, they will not be once a school or cemetery is there in its place. Rushmore State is beautiful and historical, we need to keep it that way. Please assist in what Seth Polver's next step should be.
Anyone else in row two? Row three, you're up, anyone in row three? Hey, introduce yourself.
I'm on crutches. Would anyone mind that I stood from here?
You can actually stand, why don't you sit and we can hear you? Just speak loudly, how's that sound?
My name is Elise Stahl. I've lived in Santa Ana for 18 years, but I've just recently met many more people through the devastating fire. I'm sure it takes the street I call home. I watched as my children came together to help the victim of the fire with donations, clothing, money, gift cards, and food. It made me extremely proud to cross such a valley of mine home. I met Mr. Polver due to the circumstances as well. His generosity, opening his properties to my neighbors whom he had never met was incredible. I was fortunate enough to get to know Mr. Polver better since the fire and was shocked to hear all he has been done through trying to do even more for the town he calls home. He used his local people and businesses for a bed and breakfast, and the events he has been approved to do. His kindness was evident, but I still did my own research and learned just how generous he has been to this community for many, many years. He opens his homes to the seniors for the tea parties at his own cost, I might add, and hosts events for the town. He spends years and thousands of dollars trying to build his business with little to no help from the town boards. He's come to the town for help with zoning, as I understand this is one of the main issues, but has received no help at all. I was at a loss for words when I turned this down. Mr. Polver has gotten several different directives from the village of Woodbury and everything for us. And we need to come together to sort through plans and move forward on the right path. We need action. We need to understand what the issues are. Basic plan is us so we can figure out how to navigate and move forward. After seeing this town come together to help their residents in a time of need, I was dismayed to see the same people turn their backs to a resident in need of guidance. Guidance to make this town more profitable and continue to help grow the area in a positive way. So I ask you, Mr. Mayor, will you help us?
Thank you, Laura. Anyone else in row three?
I guess I'll just say a little something.
You have to go to the podium. She has a broken leg?
We'll go with that.
We'll go with that, okay. Well, you didn't play kickball for a cause, did you?
No, I'm going to breast cancer, what is that?
You broke your leg to breast cancer?
No.
Go ahead, Seth.
Hello, Joey. So my name is Seth Polver, I'm the owner of Rushmore.
Speak up, Seth, loud if you can.
And it has been a long saga, and I'm not going to get into a lot of the details. The only one thing I do want to make sure that the board is aware of, because it seems to me that the violation and the things that have happened, that you might not be aware of the fact that there was an agreement in place between myself and Gary Thomasberger that I have documented on an email chain that clearly says I was allowed to do events under the public assembly law. You know, Gary and I went back and forth over the years, meaning I wanted to find a use for the property that was permitted because it was so difficult to try to get something done that wasn't permitted there. So I just wanted the board to know that there was an agreement in place. Because as some of my attention, that some board members believe that I was booking events and doing weddings when I was told I was not allowed to, and that is not the case. I always follow the rules, and I always hire the best professionals that I can to represent me, which I've done in this case for the whole way through. And it does seem to be one obstacle after another. And the latest thing, as I said, is I just have a feeling the board thinks I was doing something that I wasn't allowed to do, or I did have an agreement in place, but I would never do something unless I thought I was allowed to do it. And there was a lot of time and investment based on the agreement I had with Gary Thomasberger. As I said, it's fairly well documented. I just hope everybody's aware of that, that I haven't done what I understood I was allowed to do, nothing more. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Anyone else in row three before we move on to row four? All right, row four, you're up. Go ahead. Enter the podium, introduce yourself.
And there, members of the board, my name is Steve Gross. I'm Orange County Director of Economic Development on behalf of the Rushmore State. Commercial growth in the county has been doing phenomenally well over the last couple of years. Our county is growing, and that commercial growth is really beneficial to the residents of the county. Anytime we can expand the commercial tax base, it actually helps keep the taxes lower for the residents of the county. And that was actually proven. The county executive announced his budget for 2023 last week. And in that budget, there's a 7% tax decrease for the county property tax rate. That's the lowest rate in 45 years. That's important because that's a result of all the economic activity we've had in our county over the last couple of years. And much of that activity is a result of tourism and hospitality. Legoland was mentioned, it really changed the face of our county. We've got 29 craft breweries in the county right now. We've got a lot of farm, local stands, places like Angry Orchard's. People are coming to Orange County because they love what we have to offer. They love the quality of life, they love the scenery. And, you know, Rushmore State is a hidden gem. I've lived in Orange County my entire life. I've worked for county government for 27 years. I had no idea that Mount Rushmore had a connection to our county. No idea. Learned about three, four months ago. It is a huge piece of history that is hidden right here in our county, and it really deserves to be shared with the communities. You know, a lot of talk was made today about the ancillary spin-off effects of economic development. You know, caterers, you know, I passed into Anthony's forest on the way here. I actually toured the Rushmore State before coming to this meeting, just to get a look at it. In the downpour, it was still. In the downpours, it was still unbelievably beautiful. And I bring this all up because, you know, it's a great opportunity for Woodbury. It is a fantastic venue. It has the opportunity for offshoots, for economic activities everywhere, really. People stopping for coffee in the local delis. As was mentioned, local employees, local residents working there. So with that, really, I implore the village to work with Mr. Culver to try to find resolution. If the zoning is the issue, changing from residential to commercial, let's see what we can do to make that happen. To have a viable business right here in the community that really, really is a gem, it will be the shining star of the village of Woodbury. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else in row four?
Russell Cohen, Island Mills, Brigadoon since two thousand and three. I'm also the manager of Rushmore, of Rushmore Breakfast. So I've been there firsthand for the last six years. And it's been one of the greatest honors of my life, watching and sharing that piece of property with strangers from all over the country and all over the world. I was also a part of the approved events that we had this year, all of the events. I was there at every single event, and I watched bride and groom's getting married there. And it was the best day of their life. And it is, it is, watching that, it's exactly what it should be used for. Watching these people get married, watching people celebrate their life events there gives, gave me a joy that I didn't know I could have. So I just feel like, you know, Pam's moving out of town to be grandchildren, I hear.
I'm not moving.
No, she's not going anywhere. You refuse, that's why I gave her the key.
Well, a lot of us will be moved, yeah.
It's basically an anchor around her neck.
You know, I just, I have the same feeling, you know, my kids are now in college, and someday they're going to have kids, and they're going to want to bring their kids to where they grew up. And I'm fearful for what they'll return to. I hope they return to as beautiful a place as it is now. Google has been a little bit of my friend zoning laws. I changed all over the country, and they're changed because it's for the better good for the most people. And that's what we have to ask ourselves here tonight. What is the most good for the most people? Is the most good that a genuine resident of Woodbury who's dedicated this town keeps this property? Or is it beneficial to this town if unfortunately he has to part ways with it? And I, for one, vote that he keeps it, because then I get to keep my job. But I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else in row four? Okay, row five. Anyone in row five? Row six. Anyone in back? Because I don't even know if we have any rows left. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Ford. My name is Naoko Ligus. I'm the owner of Thirteen Short Place with my wife. And we were actually planning on a family vacation when everything was taking place. And by the time we got to our hotel, we received calls from my neighbors that there was a place for us to come back home to. And no expense to us. That the second we were to land here in our town, that someone opened up their doors to allow us and our family to stay as long as they were needed. I think it's important to understand and recognize that this is what makes this town good people, good neighbors. I'm born and raised in the Bronx, as so many of you. And if this fire would have taken place in the Bronx by five o'clock, there would have been looting, there would have been taken the windows, there would have been taken the furnace, and I can say that, okay? But here, what we have was neighbors that came together in a time of need and opened up their doors to us. I believe it is time, not just to show support, not just to show guidance, but to really do everything that we can to make sure that this town continues to have the neighbors that it has right now or generations to come. Thank you.
George, you have to hand that back.
So I think what you've heard before me is the why. I'm really here to talk about the how. The need for, there is a need for zoning. We did talk about that when we first had our informal conversation. When we became involved is genuine. And we talked about stipulation, that was the first priority. We worked through that. And then we were hoping to talk to the board and discuss the possibility of zoning. Came April. At that point, it seemed better to provide proposed zoning than to continue talking about it. So we did submit a draft of a zoning law on April nineteenth, which was the board meeting to discuss the stipulation. That zoning law is actually based upon their own code. A couple of different alternatives were set, looking at all the municipalities for somewhat different locations. This is, as I think several speakers have indicated, a unique situation. It's one of the Orange County tax records for it. It's the only time I've ever seen property classified as state. There's only thirty or forty of them in the entire county. It is unique in terms of its heritage, in terms of its size, in terms of the resources that exist on that position. It is approved for a Ben breakfast, that Ben breakfast is operated by Rushmore, which would be proposing to conduct the activities, the weddings and stuff. Those weddings have happened out there, almost all of them involve, almost all of them involve weddings where wedding party or guest stay at the property. And that's a real asset for Ben breakfasts. Off the road, really not a destination resort that people know about. It brings people in, brings in a group of people and makes significant sense. And that's one reason that expenses being pursued. Another reason is it is increasingly common at Ben breakfasts to provide opportunities for weddings. There's a case from the third department, I think you mentioned, we talked about it on the floor. But there is a case from the third department where the board found that Ben breakfast occupied, with an owner occupied Ben breakfast, could conduct weddings in a sense of this. So I don't mention that as the reason that you should make a decision. I mention that more as one more indication that it's becoming increasingly common to fund that kind of use in this kind of place. So what we did was to take the village's home zone, which actually is for golf courses, but it is the location where you currently have a facility that does offer wedding venues. And I believe it's not restricted to members of the golf club. We thought we would track that through, and most of it does track into the situation. Can't create noise or traffic impacts. It has to be screened from adjoining properties. The property has to be big enough to allow that use without opposing on the neighbors. It has to provide a facility for cooking, has to have an active watering sewer. All those things could be put into a code and say, yes, you can do this. And yes, it has to be an owner occupied single family home. And it can all allow it to happen by special permit, which can be renewed each year, to make sure it's in compliance from your code. So you have all the tools in place to have the ability to do all those things. That was what was in the code, we provided it. Unfortunately, we received a letter in this game, which I had no interest in suing it at this time. Wasn't an absolute network, so we're back to basically request a meeting to, a work session or something, to bring that code back before you and see if this can be adapted for your purposes for this kind of use. Have questions, I'll have an entertainment. People that probably want to think about this and discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
My name is Judy A, and I live in Brigadoon. Up until recently, I didn't know Seth, okay? I'll be honest, my neighbors generally, they're not very active, they don't step up. Okay, a lot of them talk, but this turnout, Seth, I'm in awe of you, okay? When I, I'm on social media a lot. And when I post, it's always, "Good evening, good morning, my Brigadoon family." Well, he treats the Brigadoon and Woodbury as family. And for us not to do something that, I mean, I've listed everyone as far as this is hot. I'm not aware, I don't know it, but it seems like we can't do this. So if we don't do this, I'm naming the wrong list. I'll tell you right now, I still get all these listings. There are basically nine to ten homes for sale, pending, or just pulled back and re-reno. They're living, eating, re-reno. We go up and down thirty-two. There are these gorgeous retail locations that are vacant. So do not tell me that this is prosperous or whatever. We lose Seth, and how many other businesses are we going to lose here? If we can't step up for him, who are you going to step up for? Okay, I came here beefed about the short-term rentals. They're not family, they come in here, they poach, they take our resources, and then they leave. For all these fires and all these incidents, this man stepped up. Where were they? I mean, that's one of the questions. So as elected officials, you represent us or don't? That's family. I would be here every time we need to step up for him. I'm not just going to take your time, but I think we all should be there. I mean, you know, first time I ever met Sam, I see her name all the time. For her, step up here, I mean, just one guy after one, I figured, you know what? Boom, boom, one, two, I get speed. Row one, two, go. You can't prepare for this man. You realize that? You have, you have family here. And, and you know what, count me there, okay? I mean, I don't know the details of it, and I came here a little bit torn. You know what? This is, I mean, this is not, I don't know anything about Rushmore State, it's like that. But he stepped up. If something happened to my house or my family, that man's going to step up without, without knowing me or anything else. And that's family. And if we can't be that family, I'm in the wrong place, okay? And I'll tell you right now, you know what? You sell, you leave, I'm right behind you.
Ditto, me too.
Anyone else wishing to speak in the back row? Anybody standing?
Good evening, Rachel Bruce, Island Mills. When you came to my part in the row, I didn't want to interrupt the discussion I was having here regarding Seth of Rushmore State. But I just want to briefly congratulate Pam. She's been an absolute asset to this community over the last several years. My family's worked very closely with her to ensure that different kittens that actually appear in our yard find homes. And she has gotten every single one of those cats adopted. Good, loving families, and we're going to lose them a huge asset in a couple of weeks. But I'm thrilled that they'll be staying in Woodbury, and I wish her successor the best of luck. So, thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone virtually? Please raise your hand if you are joining us virtually and wish to speak. Okay, one last time, anyone else in the room? Go ahead, introduce yourself.
Yes. So you met my husband, Rob Rodriguez. I'm Cynthia Purtur Rodriguez, thirteen short place. I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you, because I have never met you, didn't know about you, but you took this horrible situation. On behalf of my neighbor, Evan Yan, in my community, and Shuitt, I want to thank everyone for all of your support. I want to thank the board for allowing us to hold all our belongings here while we got back from our vacation. For keeping us in your prayers, for supporting us in every possible way you could, and just extending and making this situation a little bit more bearable as we were on vacation and they told us we had to stay over there until it was over. It, when we moved to Woodbury, March thirtieth, twenty nineteen, on my daughter's birthday, we made a truck from Westchester County, before that we were in the Bronx. And we had a first time rental home, after looking at over eighty homes. This was the last one we looked at, and I told myself that this wasn't it. I'm done, I'm going back to rental, didn't matter. And we fell in love, we fell in love with the sense of community. We fell in love with my neighbor Lynn, who came over with Kate the first day we were moving out of our truck. We fell in love with Elise, and told me who came over, and at any given point offered their support and help. Evan wasn't there yet, but Debbie was next door. And currently, her daughter is my daughter's teacher, who she wished was her teacher all along, but did not know that she was then her child. We are grateful. And I can't say that when you say community isn't it. And we love it. We love that we came back and we felt, we felt safe. We are thankful for the firefighters. As a child, I was, I witnessed fire, and in my face fire. And the firefighters were my best friends. And I remember always seeing a fire outside of my mom's building and always calling the fire department, and they knew it was me, so they would come and turn off whatever the fire was to make sure, and then wait. So they knew that I saw them and that they, they made everything work. While my children don't know exactly what that all looked like, because I just don't want them tarnished with that vision of what it was, what it is now. And hopefully they'll see it when it's started back up. They do, they are very fearful, very fearful of anything that becomes a drill at school. I'm grateful for our school community. I'm really grateful for my street, my neighbors, because without the constant shout, the constant report, the meal plan that came around my house, my hotel room every day. And Seth didn't take one, because we got two girls, we needed an extra all the time. But I had everyone coming to see us at the hotel and all the packages arriving at Walt Shuitt, at thirteen short place. But thank you for the, for the gold funding, because although we have insurance, you know, there's different scenes that we have to meet and different packs that we have. Without this community, without this town, things wouldn't be possible. I hope that we can do some impact for Seth and what he's going through. I don't know anything about it, I just knew that I saw it on social media and Elise said, "Come in the meeting as a show for you and..." And like my husband said, this, this is home. We hope that we can continue to see it flourish. We hope that it can continue to grow. We saw ice cream shop open up, and that was like, we lost one. We've got one, and let's try to build our support around them. And I hope that we can just build and grow around Rushmore so that they can continue to do what they really, which is a great, great place for everyone. Thanks.
All right, I don't call. Let's go, anyone speaking out in front of the audience please? One once, twice, all right. Moving on to the water. I just saw at the end table with the village water patents.
I get to go first?
Yes.
I never get to go first. I know, right? Halloween night, which in case you didn't know, is October 31st, because I get asked that a lot in the past couple of days. Is Truck or Treat at the, the Chambers Truck or Treat event is Halloween night, October 31st at the Central Valley Elementary School this year. So please mark your calendar. The week after is Election Day. You will be voting where you normally vote. Don't worry about how it's changed all summer long, wherever you'd normally vote, you will vote Firehouse, the Central Valley, Dymasium in Highland Mills over here or the Senior Center. Early voting is in place as well, you can vote anywhere in the county that has early voting, you don't have to go to anywhere specifically. Pam, I'll talk to you later, I'm not gonna talk to you now because I'm gonna both cry. And you have amazing Reuben egg rolls.
Some try and spread the eggs.
Yeah. Reuben egg rolls are pretty amazing.
Thank you.
All right, moving along. Thanks Water and Water Superintendent Mickey Phillips. Guess what we're doing tonight, Mickey?
Let everybody know we live with the water restrictions, right?
Why don't you wash your toilets?
I'm sure John Keller's happy because now he can wash the ambulances.
Yes, we already told him that.
There you go, there you go. Had nothing to do with that heavy downpour. All right, listen, on behalf of Mickey and his partner, we want to thank everybody who actually adhered to the water restrictions. It was not everybody, of course, not as opposed, so thank those that did. Chief Burke, nothing, nada, okay? Highway Superintendent, that one.
I will cry. On behalf of the Highway Department, me and Pam, we're, we work a lot together. So I just want to wish you the best on your retirement and we'll miss you.
You have an electronic state coming up also to Rock?
I'm sure. November 12th will be happening, our biannual. Electronic drop-off and shredding event at the Highway Department will be from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM sharp. So 12:05 probably not too late. Okay, so well, November 12th, 8:00.
Thank you, sir. Michael Manella, best and not least.
Good evening, I'd just like to say to Pam, on behalf of the Building Department, thank you for your service, you'll be greatly missed. And God bless your future endeavors.
Thank you, Michael. Yes, you have a thing? Moving along to board comments, starting with Trustee Pirelli.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, the ones that were online. The comments were great, you have a lot of good points. I also wanted to thank Pam, wish her best in her retirement. And then I'm gonna do something I never really do, a little public service announcement. It's flu season, so everybody think about getting flu shots. I ran into a friend of mine who's doctor last night, we gained a bunch of information. The flu shot this year is gonna have two strains of the flu. So you're gonna get, you're gonna get that and if you're 65 or older, he suggests you ask for a higher dose. You can also get a booster for COVID at the same time. But he said if you get the booster for COVID at the same time, you get the flu shot and you have a reaction, you're not gonna know where you got the reaction from. So if you want to get the flu shot and you want to get a COVID shot, put in 30 days of COVID. He also says they're predicting, I hate to say this, another wave of COVID this winter that everybody's inside and it's closed. And that's all I have, is my thoughts. That's it, I'm done.
That was long for you.
It was.
Unless she gave you on the final minute, so it's.
That's a whole different ball.
Anyway, Trustee Sorella.
First, I want to thank everybody for coming out. Clearly, there's a lot of passion in this room. Being a Woodbury resident, I had my own, some issues related to Woodbury and I know what it's like to be passionate and I'm issue. And I really appreciate being new to this board and you have given me some education and some background. And that will be very helpful to me. So that personally, I want to thank all of you for coming out. Second thing I want to say is that this weekend, on Sunday, October 16th, is the Breast Cancer Walk at the Woodbury Commons. I know I always go, my husband, my whole family goes. We have a friend that lives locally that is a breast cancer survivor and he always make a donation in carnage and it is a, you've never been to the event? It is a great, powerful uplifting event, I see someone out there that has been there. It starts at 7:30 to noon. It is family friendly, dog friendly. You will see the Monroe Woodbury football team out there being so amazing. You think about 20, 30 teenagers at 7:30 in the morning with all this stuff. It really takes a lot to get them out there. The Monroe Woodbury High School Voice Ensemble will also be there to kick it off singing the National Anthem. I hope to see everybody there, it's a big event. I never actually see my friend there, but I always text her that I'm thinking about her. And there was this one part by the Gucci store where you can yell a name of someone that survived or you want to remember. And that's always something that's very special to me because I always want to, I walk by there a few times and I just scream her name because you know what? She fought and she's. That, thank you. 7:30 to noon, nice and early.
Trustee Bureau, Deputy Mayor of the Bureau.
Thank you, thank you everyone for coming out and expressing your, I'm gonna echo Sue's passion for Seth and one who brings us the community. I really wish there was a bunch of a turnout for every issue of the village because it's good to hear voices that we don't normally hear. It's good to hear different perspectives because we are five people, five different backgrounds. I too am from New York City and from Brooklyn, so my perspective around zoning in open space is very different than many of you in this room. I've come to appreciate the beauty, the natural beauty that Woodbury offers and that's part of the reason why I'm here. I've had the pleasure of visiting Seth's estate on several occasions, it is absolutely breathtaking and beautiful and there's a lot of history there. There's a lot to consider after the comments made tonight and in general, because we're not taking any of this lightly. Nothing, I mean, how many hours have we spent? Hours upon hours to spot send the issue. And I'll stop it there because we can continue this offline, but nothing has been taken lightly, nothing has been taken on its surface. We have done the research that you clearly have done this year in terms of the history because many of us went on here when all of this went on. I just moved here in 2016, I'm in front of the ZBI and I think that was my first time to the Rushmore. When I was very. Or buying for the experience at that point and I didn't know anything about zoning, anything about planning, anything about the village board. That's actually one of the first applications that got me interested because I wanted to understand the process. Here I am today, not a politician, somebody said this is about politics, this is not about politics, none of this is about politics. We are in Woodbury for community like each of you are and we're not shutting any doors and we're not saying, you know, we're doing, you know, we, we sit here so we make the decisions, we consider everything that we hear always. So that's why community involvement is so important at each level. I don't care what political party you are, it has no voice in this level of government, okay? The local government at its lowest level right here, I don't care what letter is after your name, because I know sometimes it gets political, I'm sorry, I'm gonna tangent. I just want to say, we are hearing you, thank you very much for coming out, I appreciate it. But I can't stop speaking without speaking about Pam and her amazing passion and dedication and perseverance through a lot of things that have happened over the years. And I've only had the pleasure of knowing you for a short time over your 10 years here. And every time I would go to the shelter for whatever reason, just speaking to you, I was always in awe of, it didn't matter what came in front of you, you found a way around it. And for that, I thank you, I thank you for the residents that cannot speak on their own behalf, the quarry residents, I happen to be an ad, I'm a lover of all, allergic to cats, but can't have any, but dogs I have a plan against my husband who, we just got, I'm not gonna go there because.
She very well took me to Foster Monday.
Monday, yeah. Anyway, thank you Pam, seriously, what you do is inspiring to all of us. I wish I had it in me to do it, I think I couldn't handle the things that the horrors you have seen from the dogs getting thrown out of cars to the starved animals that make their way to you, you have, with open arms welcoming them. And the last example where you had bunnies in your yard, Sunday night Pam is guiding him, which is a certified wildlife rehabber, please correct me if I have your title incorrect. It was a Sunday night at 10 o'clock and Andrew's texting me saying, "Can you believe Pam is responding to me about what I do with the bunnies that my dogs have?" Is they're trying to eat them? And she guided him through that, how many people are that dedicated at what they do? There she is, and I just watch she has the keys, so thank you Pam, we are forever grateful for you and your love for animals and dedication to our community.
And I gotta be happy ending with the rabbits, Pam, because I didn't even fully take your advice, I waited till morning for my husky. You know, that type of animal comes in, drops a baby rabbit at my 15-year-old's feet. And I am literally at somebody's birthday, I'm at Beth Zunlos's birthday party or kid's birthday. And there I am running home because now there's a baby bunny in a shoebox. And I had no idea what to do and I'm like, all right, I don't call on Pam. So, and I'm like, I don't know if she's gonna answer, but she did. And I found another baby bunny out there and I was happy to learn that they've sort of made a loose family out of themselves. You saw them running around, I wound up putting them back out in the mornings. I didn't want to put them out on the overnight because it was just too dimful. So put them out in the morning and they seem to be thriving around my yard until my husky comes back and decides he's gonna make a meal out of my. I know, I'm holding on, I don't think it's a bad, hey, they're getting bigger feet so they can love their pets. Happy ending, happy ending. All right, CJ, Trustee Russ, I'm gonna move in here tonight, so I'm gonna read something from him. First, pretty thing, first, please accept my apologies for not being able to make this evening in person tonight. Tending meetings is important to me and it's the most, and this is only the second one I've missed in four years. I unfortunately had a prior commitment tonight. He is the chairman of the National Association of Water Companies and they have this semi-annual meeting which he had to speak to chairperson. So that being said, I would like to address an item that may be on people's minds, I will address the water rates. And that did not come up at all this evening. So the village water rates increased this June, the first time in over a decade. This increase was extremely necessary and frankly, the rate should have been increased step by step a long time ago. We as a board, working with our water company, have put in place long overdue maintenance plans for our system. Such as well rehabilitation, along with plans for further infrastructure replacement and maintenance. We are looking to augment supply in settling wells. Have to plan treatment for PFAS. Members above state limits provide iron and manganese treatment where needed and continue to plan out the items into the future to ensure sustainable water supply for our residents. Having quality potable water is not a choice, it's a mandate and something we as a village take very seriously. Along with that, New York State and EPA put in place new regulations that we have to comply with. The 10 parts per trillion PFAS standard is to strip dissemination and something that all water purveyors will have to deal with eventually. This is a costly standard to comply with that provides our residents with insurance that the water is of the best quality. From our experience. And I'm a home depot guy, you're talking about. Now it's the lowest commercial. That's really valid, I don't even know that. I don't even know if it's worse if you don't know how to turn up your phone. All right, you did anything? Yes, he loves this story. Now I'm gonna start again.
No, no.
All right, from my experience, the average well would cost approximately $2 million to treat and comply with this new rule. EPA is promulgating these regulations on lead and copper that start in 2024. These new rules require full inventories of every service that's throughout water. New sampling requirements as well as probable new lower limits for lead. This will be another expense that will have to be carried by the water purveyors that can range into the nose. Village water department have had to ban the remainder nonetheless. All this should be covered in the cost of water to those that use the service. It should not be borne in taxes as those on private wells and non-village water should not be responsible for the system improvements. Our water rate schedule is a conservation oriented one that tries to ensure the sustainability of our supply long into the future. It is a graduated schedule that charges progressively, newer and higher, more the higher the water usages. It is only fair that those who use most of the resource pay the most for the upkeep. I would encourage everyone, you had a high bill this time around to take stock of how much water you actually used over the last four months. While we may have had restrictions in place, usage is usage and solely depends on the individual choice. And if he finishes with any, if anyone has any questions, by all means, reach out to him personally and he will answer them with the Easter. Okay, my turn. All right, let me begin with Pam. So spoken about the lovely Miss Pam and my promise moving forward. The animal shelter will be in good hands. Sarah is being anointed as the heir apparent there and I feel like she's gonna be here to the village for some time. The animal shelter should move forward the way it always has. To that end, what I plan on doing is probably returning to the friends of the animals that used to be part of Woodbury for many years. Starting committee, looking at the local laws that are in place to make Woodbury a tougher place. Where we will not stand for anybody that ties around those outdoors for all hours of the day in all leathers. Because I, I personally dealt with our source and what goes on with some irresponsible and disgraceful owners in Woodbury. So my goal is to get a committee together and start looking at local legislation as we can put in place that will force people to be responsible owners or don't adopt them. Okay, it's ridiculous that I even have to say that, but I think we've all seen the stories on Facebook or, or on the news of animals that were just left tied up someplace with somebody else to find. Or even my own dogs who were, I had one, I had one dog that was kicked out and that's where a puppy's on the side of the road. I have my Quincy who is Pam is very familiar with, who was basically put a bell on his neck and then left in Newburgh to walk around until he was found, who's brother. And then of course, my pit bull who was, was part of a breeding situation for pit bulls. Which is, which is another story because she is the sweetest daughter and these breeds, these breeds in general just rabble with the record. So that is my promise to Pam and the residents of Woodbury. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the Woodbury Town Building and Browns for the work they have done, not only downstairs for our fire department, but also as you come in, there's a, the hallways have been freshly painted. They have done a backup job, Bobby Blair and his crew, so I do want to thank them. Moving on to the topic of conversation this evening and some of the other things that go on on Facebook. So, nobody comes to our meetings. That's the bottom line and I basically made that statement last year. We are very transparent. And I, and I basically said I'm angry the accusations that we were not make me personally. Because it is very simple to follow us along. I am working on bringing that. I am working on bringing that to Channel 22. Our meetings are on YouTube. Our meeting minutes are on the website. Our meeting agendas, I think I'm the only municipality that posts those on social media. So that you can always see them. There is nothing we have to hide. So discussions on the water rates and everything else that's been going on in Woodbury. Come to a meeting and you all did that tonight, my board members have spoken about that. So this is, this situation is not a means and situation addressed. Okay? And that is why we are kind of, sort of fumbling around with it, is the best way to put it. We're just taking our time with it, because change zoning for one, change zoning for all. I do not get to discriminate against anybody. Okay? I cannot say for you yes and for you no. Because in March, I had a deal with basically the law force them to put 800 homes on. And him starting his own campaign against my board and my family. So this is the situation where we have to proceed cautiously. Last year, I think everybody was aware that an individual who could not get their zone changes from this board. Decided he was gonna go out and try to get Jerry Cho to annex his property. Okay? These are the type of situations that keep us up at night. This is not an easy job. So it's like this, and it is constant. It is water and sewer and plant and zoning and building and fire and iron. It is never ending. But decisions we try to make here are in the best interest of everyone, our Woodbury residents. So when we make a decision, we have to take into account how that decision will affect things down the road. So I want to thank everybody for coming. Believe me, I love having a lot of people here, especially if you guys were in Danish and pastries. That's always a good thing. Nobody did that tonight. Okay? But I want to thank you. We will take everything that has been said tonight under consideration. And really, that's all I have to say.
You want to talk about what we're all wearing?
Oh. Hey, progressive awareness. And the next, the next meeting is the 26th. So we will be coming as our favorite village people.
27, no.
27, 27. CJ has already said, since he's not here, that he will be the biker. So he'll be wearing his leather chaps.
We're just dressing up for Halloween.
You are dressing up. Okay.
I feel sick there, Tom.
Yes. Okay, no further comments, receive the business that is discussed, and please send a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion?
Motion by Tara, sent by Victorelli, our next meeting, go on the table. Next meeting is October 7th.